Just soft. All right. Today is Tuesday, October 18, 2022. I call this regular meeting to order at 6:39 PM. Pledge of Oath of Legion by, lead by Councilmember Wu.
Please place your hands on your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and its law.
Thank you.
Clerk, roll a card, please.
Mayor Ding. Sorry.
Okay. Here.
Vice Mayor Harrington.
Here.
Councilmember Minchaca.
Here.
Councilmember Rivera.
Here.
Councilmember Wu.
Here.
And the closing section report. Our city attorney will now give the closing section report from the special meeting held earlier tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The board met pursuant to the government's clause 549 to 56.9 to discuss more items of existing litigation. City of San Gabriel versus San Gabriel Valley Council of Government. A report was given to the board and instruction was given to staff. That concludes my closing session report.
Thank you. We will now have some announcement from our chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is livestreamed on cable channel three and our online platforms. If you wish to address the city council during tonight's meeting, we request that you please complete a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. When speaking, please state your name for the record. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive city council agendas, please email your request to cityclerk@sgch.org.
Thank you. Approve agenda order. Staff has requested the new business item 7B, Graham Vai Guy and Graham Vai Newsletter Merge be moved to the, to the November 15 city council meeting. Are there any other change requests? Is this their, the motion to the approved agenda as the amendment?
I'll move to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. The motion made by the councilmember Minchaca is seconded by councilmember Rivera. Please vote.
Motion passes by vote of five zero.
Next item, please.
Presentation A, introduction and promotion of fire engineer Brent Patterson. Fire Chief Wallace will make the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Ding, Vice Mayor Harrington, and honorable members of the city council. Steve Wallace, fire here chief tonight. I'm here to promote and recognize Brent Patterson, who's recently promoted as fire engineer. As you know, with the recent addition of new members in our department, we're actually able to make some promotions that we haven't been able to in quite some time. So I'm honored to introduce our latest promoted member. This duties of the fire engineer encompass a wide range of skillsets and require the member to be a jack-of-all-trades. Not only does the engineer skillfully drive and operate the pumping apparatus, but they're also experts on tools, equipment, water supply, hydraulics, and mechanical systems. In fire service culture, the engineer is also an informal leader that really gets the work of the fire department done. It's my pleasure tonight to present fire engineer Brent Patterson. Step up. Engineer Patterson began his journey with the San Gabriel Fire Department 10 years ago, starting as an auxiliary firefighter. He dedicated himself to learning and service and through that earned a very competitive spot for sponsorship to paramedic school in 2015. When upon completion at paramedic school in 2016, he was hired by the department as a firefighter/paramedic, which he served until his promotion recently to fire engineer. Since starting the department, Brent has immersed himself in the organization, serving as a firefighter/paramedic, honor honor guard, as a paramedic preceptor, self-contained breathing apparatus technician, and most recently as a member of our training cadre, which onboarded and instilled our core values and skillsets into our new firefighters. Accompanying Brett tonight will be his wife Nikita, their sons Liam and Tristan, his mother Kathy, and his father David. At this time, chief city clerk, if you'd please administer the oath of office.
Please raise your right hand and then repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Brent Patterson.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I enter into this obligation freely.
That I enter into this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duty.
Discharge the duty.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Brent's wife Nikita will now place his engineer's badge. And it's a good thing we're getting this done because he is here on duty tonight and they could be, have to jump out of here at a moment's notice. All right, I'd like to invite your, your family up. For any pictures. And to humbly request, maybe the council could join him for a picture? We'll do, we'll do family then, then get you down there. Thank you. Got it? Thank you. And Brent, I don't know if you'd like to address the council? Sure.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Ding, Vice Mayor Harrington, distinguished members of the city council, and our city manager. I would be remiss if I didn't thank a few people during this celebration. I am humbled to be here again in front of all of you, albeit with a little less hair and a few more wrinkles than the last time I was up here. But I am truly grateful for this opportunity to provide a higher level of service to the city, its department, and the community of San Gabriel at large. As with most worthy endeavors, I could not be standing in front of you tonight without the help of many other people. I'd like to thank Chief Wallace for your faith in me, and I will do my best to continue to earn my position every day, on duty and off. A huge thank you to all the members of the department here and also not present. It, no matter your length of time on the job, I've learned a lot from each of you. And so I share this celebration with you. You all have given me countless hours of training and preparation, and now I owe that, and I will pay that forward. To my mom. There you are. Thank you for laying the foundation for this and for all of your years of support. My stepfather Dave, thank you for being an example and showing me what a full career of service is supposed to look like. To my sons, thanks for keeping me young. I know I work a lot, but hard work pays off. And of course, to my wife, Nikita, this isn't possible without you. All right? Through 21-day deployments and hours of training and studying on my off days, you hold it down at home and you keep me steady, so thank you. Six years ago, I stood in front of all of you and I took my oath, and I pledged my service to the city and its fire department. And I promise now that my dedication will continue as an engineer. So thank you very much for your time tonight. I really appreciate it. Is there anything? Oh, okay.
Congratulations, congratulations. Okay. All right. Next item, please.
Public comment. This is the time set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest that are not on the agenda but are within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the San Gabriel City Council. If you wish to address the council, please fill out a speaker's card and hand it to the clerk. And our first speaker this evening is Debbie Kilgore.
Good evening. I'm here to talk about a couple of things. Number one is to remind people that are listening or interested, but we do have a candidate forum tomorrow at the Grapevine Padilla Room, so please come. The meeting starts, is open starting at 6 o'clock. Please come, bring your questions, or we'll have little cards for you to fill out. It's being run by the Women's League of Voters in Pasadena. I don't know who's coming, but hopefully everybody will come this time, and we're going to ask questions. All the questions are going to be given to the moderators, and they will ask the questions. So we're not going, each person can't ask individual things, and we had problems with recusers, people complaining or speaking out at the last one, so we should not do that at all. And so we're looking forward to anybody to come and bring your questions. And the same question is basically asked for all candidates. So that is tomorrow, Wednesday, the 19th, starts, opens at 6:00. And the meeting is basically from 6:30 to 8:30, but please bring your questions early so they can be sorted out and they can, they ask the same. If there are a bunch of questions that are very similar, then they're put together a question to answer those questions, like one question to answer. So that. The other thing, and I mentioned, this is the third meeting I've mentioned, is about candidate signs. I will tell you, candidate signs are being put in empty buildings. They're being put on green construction things. I had a friend, I met her, and she tells me that a sign is being put up at her house, no permission. And the next night Denise Minchaca showed up and said, what happened to the signs? And they told her, there are no signs. We did not give permission for signs. So whoever you're doing this, you guys are still responsible. You're putting up signs that don't belong where, I see signs in empty businesses. There are just signs there. So you tell me that, that, is it really the owner or the property or whatever? The signs need to be in appropriate places, not put in parkways and not put where they really don't belong without permissions. And green fences, there are green fences down on Delmar and on San Gabriel Boulevard that has candidate signs on those. Those don't belong there. So before the next, the when, before the next election comes, we're going to change the sign postage, that it needs to be done appropriately, and it's done by everybody. If you guys can't get the signs up now, you want to rule our city, you can't follow simple candidate signs for all members and can't, people that are running, then you guys don't belong to be leaders, any of you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address council?
Next item, please.
Consent calendar. Items listed under the consent calendar are considered routine, and recommendations will be approved in one motion unless a member of the city council or public requests separate discussion. We have not received requests from the public to pull any items.
Would any council member like to pull any item from separate discussion? No? Do I have a motion for item?
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by the councilmember Minchaca, seconded by Vice Mayor Harrington. Please vote.
Motion passes by vote of five zero.
Next item, please.
We have no public hearing, our continued business this evening. Our next item is new business item A, discussion and input on city council recognition policy. City Manager Lazaretto will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So the item before you tonight is a discussion on the city councils, or the city of San Gabriel's recognition policy. Just to kind of start with the ending in mind, I'm looking for direction from council tonight on changes to our current policy. It's just a majority decision, and then I will bring back a formal policy at a future council meeting with a resolution to adopt it. The council policy that you're looking at tonight was created by staff in 2013. I don't know if there was a staff, a staff policy prior to that, but the current policy that we follow was adopted by staff in 2013. Since it was adopted by staff, when I've had questions from council or the mayor about how, you know, the policy was implemented or, or holding council and the mayor to the policy, it becomes a little uncomfortable for staff to hold the council to a, a policy that the council hasn't adopted. So my first goal tonight is to get council to, you know, come together and approve a, a policy that you're all holding yourselves accountable to, and then staff will be just administering that policy. Throughout the time that I've been here, I've had a couple of questions come up from prior council members and, and current council members about whether certificates should come from the entire council or just one of the council members. Just to refresh your memory, the way that the, the policy works right now, the mayor ultimately is the arbitrator of what is worthy of a policy, of a certificate. All of those requests come in to, through the city manager's office to the mayor, and they're all prepared by the city clerk's office. We try to get those to the mayor as far in advance as possible so that we can prepare those certificates well in advance of any, any of the events that you all attend. But in the past, there has been concerns about maybe just having individual certificates to be administered by individual council members. My recommendation would be that we keep it from the whole council because I believe it's more formal and I think more meaningful to folks who receive certificates if it's signed by the whole council. But the request would be if you decide to change it and have it from individual council members, that you give staff more time in advance so that we can prepare that into our workload throughout the week. And just to refresh your memory, that timeline right now that's in the policy is, is a week. We can always do them closer to that if, you know, if it, if it isn't the norm, if it's the exception, and we do try to accommodate all requests, but with as much notice as possible, it makes it easier. And we are creating a webpage so that members of the public who are requesting, and we already have it in place, can be filled out for either proclamations or certificates so that we can get all of the wording, and Marilyn has gone through the trouble of creating that, so I have to give her all the props for that. And so it will aid in staff being able to prepare those accurately. And then finally, our definitions that we had of what constitutes something worthy of a certificate or a proclamation were very brief and, and very broad. And so I've come up with some proposed language that I think gives the mayor more guidelines and more guidance for what constitutes. And just a couple of items to point out, things like noteworthy birthdays, which in the past we have told council hasn't been the norm. Certainly, it's very acceptable or appropriate for somebody on their 85th or 90th or 95th birthday to receive something from the city. And so this gives some of that guidance. Ultimately, it would be up to the mayor to decide what is worthy, given this guidance and the definitions, and that would still be the case. So with that, I'm looking for direction from council on three items really, the, the timeline, whether that week in advance for certificates and 30 days for proclamations is still appropriate. Whether we want to keep it as all certificates come from the entire council, or whether you want to entertain certificates from an individual council member. And then finally, whether that language that I proposed works and any changes or additions or subtractions from that language. So that would conclude my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that council has.
Thank you, Mark. Does any council member have the factual question for staff to clarify the report? Okay. I hear none. It's the chief's city clerk. Do we have any public comments?
We do. Mayor, our first speaker is Chastity Jennings Nunez.
Good evening, everyone. Every proclamation, certificate, commendation, and city plaque issued represents an acknowledgement of that entity by the city government of San Gabriel. These acknowledgements should continue to be approved in advance by the mayor and be signed by all members of the city council. Individual council members should not be able to bestow a city honor on pet projects or on organizations that may or may not represent the values and mission of our city government. And our city staff should not be made to comply with requests from groups who only want certain city council members who are perceived to be like-minded or who support their ideologies. This would be completely inappropriate and antithetical to the belief that our city government represents and answers to all residents in the city. There is nothing that prevents an individual council member from creating their own certificate and signing it, at least I don't think there is, but it should not be handled by the city staff or be given the same substance as an official city certificate. I would also like to see in the policy language that specifically identifies several standing annual proclamations. These would include major heritage months for Asian-American and Pacific Islanders, African-Americans, Hispanic and Latino-Americans, and Indigenous American populations. Other standing proclamations would include those for the LGBTQ community, Women's History Month, Juneteenth, Mental Health Awareness Month, and National Police Week, as well as others. These proclamations should not be subject to a council member or resident having to submit a request each year, nor should they be missed because one was not submitted. The current policy of a minimum of seven days' notice and the signature of the mayor and all council members should be maintained. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to address council on this item?
Mr. Mayor, just to address the last comment that Dr. Jennings Nunez mentioned, we do have on that webpage that Marilyn prepared, it does have a list of all of those standing proclamations and, and the, our recognition of those months that she mentioned. But we could add it to the policy if that's something that council wanted. I've kept it on that page so it can change year to year as council does that, but the understanding is that you wouldn't have to ask every year for Hispanic Heritage Month or all of those other months, that those are already going to be into our rotation.
Okay. So it's already on our website, all the months. That's good. Yeah. Like the automatic, every year reminded. Okay. Good. Thank you. So.
Excuse me. May I just ask the city manager a question? So if we would put it in the policy, every time we decide to add another one, do we would have to bring the policy back to add it? Or how would that work?
We would, because it would be adopted by resolution. So the suggestion would be that council, when you adopt a proclamation or a recognition month for the first time, we just add it to our rotation, and we can keep that list on our website, and that wouldn't require bringing any policy back. So short answer is, is, is if we keep it on the website, it's easier to amend from time to time as we add new months without having to bring this item back for a formal resolution.
So our resolution also have a definition, if we previous already approved a proclamation, right? So we don't need to change the actual resolution, too, right?
That's right. And we can even list in that resolution the, the list that we currently have, and we can put some language in there and such as what gets added from time to time by the council. Something like that. So it doesn't have to be brought back.
Mayor, and so let's say we, we have a reference in the policy to go to the website. But what if there's a new, you know, something we want to capture that's new? Because I feel like the last four or five years, we've added a lot more than when I first started five years ago. Would we, would that still go through the mayor? The mayor approves it, then we would add it to the list on the website? Or how's it get to the list on the website? Just one person decides?
Nope. You're exactly right. It would go through the mayor, as with all the other proclamations and commendations. So one of the council member, if they would want to have a, a new item recognized or celebrated, that would first go to the mayor, and then the mayor would say yes or no, and then it would get put into that rotation. Technically speaking, if the mayor said no and the rest of the council wanted to overrule, it could be brought on the agenda, and three out of five could, could override the mayor. But the short answer is, is a member of the public could submit it through the website, and then the mayor would see that and decide, or a member of the council can email myself or staff, and then we would ask the mayor, and then it would show up on an agenda.
So on the website right now, if somebody wants to add something, they have the ability to, or they have to just, okay. So you have like email or some kind of Dropbox?
A fillable form.
Fillable form. Okay. Well, that's great. Okay.
Okay. It's now time for the council discussion. Who would like to study?
I'll continue.
Okay. All right, continue.
So on, on the birthdays, I think that's a great idea. I, I don't, I don't recall us doing anything for birthdays in the past. Are, are those done at the city council meetings, or are those done just, you know, personally? It's delivered to them? How do birthdays work?
So certificates would be the latter. Certificates would be presented at an event or just delivered to the person. Obviously, if the council wanted, we could present a certificate to somebody at a council meeting, but the majority of certificates are not at council meetings. The proclamations would be the ones that would be on the beginning of a council meeting. And the certificates, we were, were suggesting for milestone birthdays only.
But what's mile, we're not, do we define milestone? Because some people think 50 is a milestone. I mean.
So the draft.
They say 90, 95, 100.
And 90, 95, 100.
So the draft policy says 90 and 95 get a certificate, and then 100 is a proclamation.
Oh, yeah. Okay. That's different. Okay. 100, yeah, that's good, right?
That, that works.
And I think I, we've done two of those in the past that I remember, the 100 birthday.
Yeah, I don't remember any.
And they were both in the chambers.
Okay.
That's pretty fun.
Those should be in the chambers, absolutely. Okay. Okay, that's good to hear. And then the other question that was brought up was about certificates, whether it's from the entire council or individual. I come from the perspective that I believe it should be from the entire council. We did have a council member in the past who had something like 400 certificates that were being distributed at events per year, but that council member paid for their certificates and had them designed, and that was an individual choice. But anything coming from this council, this, from city hall using taxpayer money, I think it needs to be from the full council. So I do agree with that recommendation. The other one was, we talked, okay, we talked about standing proclamations, something that just came up recently, and I wasn't quite sure where this would fit. So I'm going to ask the city manager. Before we give a certificate, let's say it's a business, what kind of research is being done? Because I know just recently there was a certificate that we were thinking about providing, and you know, there was some social media information that was given to us that we, we, well, the mayor and the city manager decided not to distribute the certificate. And I think it's kind of, it, it segues into the public comment that it wasn't appropriate. It's not something we want to be, it wasn't reflective of our values collectively. So how do we put social media or research or Google, whatever the case may be? How is that embedded into this policy?
That's a, a great question, Councilwoman Minchaca. And, and that's part of the behind-the-scenes that council doesn't see and the public doesn't see. And I know that council members get pressure from the public when they get a certificate request at the last minute. And, you know, and somebody who's receiving a certificate, they probably assume it's just something that gets printed very quickly, and it doesn't take time out of somebody's day. But the answer to your question is, is when we get a request, the first thing we do is research that person or that organization to find out if there's some sort of a nexus between a, a service or a benefit that they provide to the city of San Gabriel. We are trying to make sure that certificates go to people who have some connection to the city, whether it's a resident here or a business that's here or somebody that's a nonprofit that provides services here. whether it's a resident here or a business that's here or somebody that's a nonprofit that provides services here. So the, um, city clerk staff, one of the first things they do is pull up information about that person or organization. And right away, if they see something that says, you know, we provide services to the community, then that's something that works for us and we'll generally, um, send it to the mayor at the time and they would make that determination of whether the certificate would happen. So in the, so as part of that research, you know, we don't do an exhaustive, uh, research. If, if, you know, people have stuff in their past, we're not gonna find that kind of thing. But every once in a while, when you do a, a Google search on something, you know, social media posts or other things will come up and this happened to come up in a feed, that it was something that isn't representative of the ideals of the city. And so we use that as a, a reason to not give a certificate in that case. So we do a search on everything, um, I can't promise that we're gonna catch anything in everything. It's not meant to determine if somebody is good or bad, but we do try to determine if there's a connection.
But is it important to include that here, that there is a process, so it's not just automatic? There's a process that takes place. That was a, I mean, that was a good, a great catch, um, to Sharon and Marilyn, I applaud their group for, for doing that. But, um, you know, where in the policy, cause anybody who looks at it, looks like we just make the requests and just randomly make the distribution, there's no thought process. And I think it needs to be very transparent that, um, you, you don't automatically get it because you know somebody on the council or you're friends with someone, you, you actually have to earn it in some fashion. And again, credit to the city clerk, the certificates I've seen in the past, a lot of them are originals. They, they actually write something, you know, I, I know you, he's done some research because the way that the certificates are written, you, you know, recognize their contributions. And so I, I just want everyone to understand, including my colleagues, that every time we submit a certificate, there's a lot of work being done by, by our city clerk's office. And, and I, I take great pride when I see those certificates because they're, it represents us as a city and they've customized them. They've actually taken the time, I don't know if it takes fifteen minutes or it takes an hour, but they've taken the time to make the recipient feel special and feel like San Gabriel really cares. And so, um, I, I just think people need to understand that, it's just not a switch. It's, it takes time, somebody, um, is taking the time to understand the organization and put our best foot forward. Okay, um, and then the, um, let's see, the language. You had a question about language, Mark, I was, I just put language, I forget what you were asking. Cause you had, you asked us to, to opine on five areas and language is one of them, what was that again?
Thank you, on page four of the staff report, there are the definitions, the, the additional language behind proclamation, certificates of recognition, um, and that's the language I'm asking you to look at.
So it's, what's this, where it says proclamation?
That's right, everything under proclamations, everything under certificates of recognition, all the way to the fiscal impact. And if you, um, look at the redlined version attached to the staff report, it'll show you where those would go into the existing policy. So that's, that's the language that I'm asking you to, to look at and, and either amend or approve or both.
Okay. Well, uh, yeah, at this point, that was all, I'm not sure, you're gonna bring this back anyway, but I've already kind of shared my, my interest, thank you.
Thank you. Any council member discussion? Councilmember Rivera?
To touch on what, um, uh, councilmember Minchaca was talking about, were you talking about adding that to the website and letting, like, the person know, hey, there's gonna be like this minor little background check on you or something? Or is that something that we're gonna tell the public that's gonna happen or are we just gonna do that?
Well, I thought on, on the website, all it talks about are the standing proclamations. Does it also have the ability for people to submit if they want certificates?
Yes.
I, I guess there should be something that just lets them know, um, done it very diplomatically.
Yeah, that, that is not automatic.
Yeah.
There's gonna be, maybe, you know, like, maybe be more specific, like, social media is gonna be checked or, you know, something that lets them know, so we just kind of cover ourselves too and we're not invading anybody's privacy.
So it may...
That it has to be within the cities, you know, um, issued.
So actually, they're on the website, have the fill out the form, so it doesn't mean they can gather the requests.
With the disclosure, like a little disclosure, just letting them know, hey, this can happen, you know?
Yeah.
Just so that we, we disclose it and we're transparent on, on the process.
Yeah, I see.
We don't, they don't catch us by surprise, like today.
Yeah, on, on a form, I think it just put on a condition, it's, it would be get approved. Then we can, if we've not approved, you cannot get the, the certificate. I think it, it is correct, the order.
We can set it up, mayor and, and council, we can set it up and we'll add language to the policy, um, that what the two council, uh, members and I'm sure the rest will agree to. We'll put some draft language in the policy for you to see next time and then we'll put a disclaimer on the website so that when they hit submit, they'll either get a response email or it'll say right there on the website that just because you're submitting it, doesn't mean you're gonna get a certificate. It has to go through a vetting process and we'll be in touch with you.
That's very important, otherwise it's, it's barely there, I can't get the, the certificate anyway, you know?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, is there another city that's doing something similar that maybe we should look at? Because they, if they've had it longer than us, maybe there's some other areas that we're not thinking of right now. Just to kind of, uh, help us out.
We, uh, plagiarism is the highest form of flattery and in putting all of this together, we've tried to take the best of, of what other cities are doing. And, uh, so we've done a little bit of that and so we'll, we'll do that again when we finalize the form and everything else.
And I know there's been times when we've attended events and we've taken certificates and people are not, either their organization doesn't call us up or they're not expecting the certificates and we just kind of leave them there. How can we avoid that? I mean, do they specifically want the certificate or we just take it just in case, or how does that work?
The majority of time, it's a, at the request of either a council member or the mayor. So we would rely on the council member or the mayor to, um, to vet that before we prepare their certificates. But we do get, uh, requests from time to time from cities or organizations that are having the events and I think all of those times, they're happy to receive the, the request.
Okay.
Yeah, maybe the councilmember Rivera mentioned, maybe we, for the, like, a certificate, how to hand, maybe, uh, maybe, uh, staff maybe can confirm from the organization or, uh, so what, when, where would you show the certificate or what's the procedure if we bring the certificate? Yeah, most of their respect, it's good, no problem, but I know, yeah, something is, it would be happen, yeah.
One, I don't know if they were not expecting it or two,
Yeah.
they didn't call us up to speak or anything and we're just like, okay, who do we leave the certificates with, you know?
Yeah, I understand, I, this is the situation.
So maybe when we get an invitation somewhere, just kind of let them know, hey, do you want us to take a certificate or not, you know? When they reply to, when they RSVP to our invitations, maybe ask if they, they're gonna require our certificate. That way we don't take one if they don't want one.
Yeah. Vice Mayor, Herr, uh, Herron, yeah.
Yeah, I would, I would just, I would agree with everything we've discussed. I would just add that if we're going to, you know, have the website submission, we should also have a point of contact that at a certain point they're able to call. So if there's an automated email or if there's something that they need to be able to speak to somebody, cause that's often...
Yeah.
Emails are fine, but sometimes you need to just talk to them.
Still need to call back to confirm, right, or sometimes the email, it'll go to a spin too, you know? Yeah, that's happened too. Yeah, okay. Councilmember Wu?
Thank you, Mary Dean. I think that we, we, we probably have to think about, um, because there's no physical impact, but it takes a lot of time from our staffs. So to prevent those, uh, you know, waste of the time, I know that sometime the people from the same organization, but they may approach different council members for the, for the same reason or for the same event. So we have a, we have a system, we can just alert the second applicants or somehow maybe mayor got the one, um, request and I got another request maybe a few days later. So we can just get alerted and we will just prevent to do the duplicated certificates for the same event. Or maybe they just have a, like, a different person they want to present it, but, um, it could be overlap somehow. So we can, we, we just save the money and save the time for this.
Thank you, councilmember, we, we can make sure that the city clerk's office and, and my staff work together on those duplicate requests so they, we don't do it more than once.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could I just ask, cause I'm looking at Marilyn, I think you're the point person, so it, it would be difficult for any duplicates because they all go through you, or is, isn't that the case?
Yeah, the, most of the certificates go through Nancy and myself along with our staff, but we have a list that we keep ongoing so that anytime a certificate is requested, we automatically know who it was requested by and the organization that requested it. So we're able to see how many times it was requested, if it was requested multiple times or we'll just say it's already been requested and it's being processed.
So we have safeguards in place, alright?
We do.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, uh, yeah, so far, uh, no, I, uh, I have allowed the, the organization the certificate. I, so far, I don't see the really duplicate certificate. That's a wonderful job, your, your, your staff did it and I, I appreciate, even I could talk to the, the community, they request a certificate. Some people, if you don't know, they feel, hey, you're, you're mayor, you just print out, it's, it's very easy. But I say, no, it's, uh, it's not that way and we have done some, uh, procedure, staff has spent time and researched the, what's the organization, they do the, I would especially focus on our, our city of San Gabriel, right? And, and, and also have time, it, actually, each certificate, even one organization asking ten certificates, but ten certificates have ten different names, they have to print out, so it's spend a lot of time too. I really, for myself, it's appreciation, appreciate that you do the job, but also I want to let the public know, it's, 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 it's not that kind of easy, just one minute can do it, right? Okay, so, yeah, and, uh, so how about the way, the suggestion just regarding the, the whole, whole council on the certificate, right? Okay, there, yeah, I, for, for mine, uh, I, I, I prefer myself, I just say the, prefer the five council member on the, on the certificate because they are, we are a team, right, there, we are really representing our city, you know? So even, look, so if we sit it, we give to them a certificate, I hope also the organization, the public, the organization, they should be know that's a, we come out and not for our person, not just of my Tony Dean, not the John Woo, right? It's, it's representing our city of San Gabriel. So, so we try to respect each other, not just personally, right? So, uh, I, I, yeah, I really support that, still continue the five council member to honor on the certificate. And I saw some special, the, based on the, the, uh, staff report also, if sometimes they request another certificate, I think it's, it's a letter, maybe can go from the, uh, the individual council member, uh, to write the letter to, it, it, I think, yeah, here, it's a page nine, right? On the page nine...
Are you talking about the com, uh, commendation letter? Cause that one, that can be signed only by the mayor?
No, it's assigned by the, yeah, each council member by themselves.
Page five.
Page, oh, page five.
It, it's the same language, one is just the redlined version. But yes, the commendation, the official mayor letter of commendation would be from the mayor, but there is nothing that says that an individual council member can't send out their own letters of appreciation to members of the public, as long as you don't indicate you're speaking for the whole council or for the city, that it's just on behalf of one council member, there's nothing that prevents you from doing that.
Yeah, okay, so the certificate is five council member. The letter, you can, the, all the council member can request, I, 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 I think for myself is support this kind of version, you know? So help, if you, some council member really wanted to buy them some self, it should just use the letter. So I, I don't know rest of council.
I think we should keep everything, everyone together.
I mean, actually, if, if the mayor is gonna be sending out letters, I like to know what the mayor's doing, actually. Cause as a mayor, and I've been a mayor, I think, well, three of us have been mayors, it, it's a representation of the council and so I don't want to be, um, blindsided either when somebody comes up and says, oh, you know, I got a mayor letter of commendation and maybe I don't agree with it. You know, I, I just like to know, um, on, on those letters. I've seen, you know, when, when we do letters of support or where the mayor, um, signs a letter of support, for example, you know, there were some propositions that we were, um, trying to, well, we were showing, uh, support on a regional basis, the whole council got them. I mean, we all got to see them. So I just think it needs to be consistent, whether it's a letter of support for whatever project or proposition, uh, commendation, appreciation, as long as all of us see it and we know what is taking place. You know, I, I'm more comfortable that way as opposed to, I mean, you know, there, that is discretion of the mayor to do, but just keep us informed, that's all I, I would be asking.
So even, even letter also with the five council member?
No, I, I'm comfortable with the mayor just signing, but if, when the mayor does sign, cause I'm, I'm just thinking back, for example, when I was mayor, there was a, a letter of support that was written and, um, I signed it, but the whole council got to see it and the whole council was in agreement. That's all I'm saying is, so we can all keep ourselves accountable and we all see what is being distributed by the mayor.
Be happy to add that language that we make copies or, or electronic copies to send. I'll also clarify this language because it's not support for an assembly bill or a position, like a political position, that would have to come after the council blesses that. This would be more for, you know, inclusion in the, um, the, um, AYSO, you know, program or the Kiwanis breakfast or something like that, more ceremonial and, um, less, uh, position. But I will, uh, clarify that language and also even those letters, the, the council, I'm sure, will want to see what the mayor is, is sending out on, on behalf of the city, so we'll, we'll have copies of those.
So some letter still can, like, uh, each individual council member can write a letter, but, uh, the question also regarding the each council member, the letter, we have to rest of, of the council agree to? That's a, a language you would need, we need to clarify too, you know? I know, okay, alright. Okay. Thank you.
Nope, I think I have consensus and I'll bring back a final, uh, version if that's, uh, what works for council.
Okay. Thank you, Mark, and, uh, next, next item, please?
Public comment, is there anyone wishing to address the council? No mayor.
Okay, thank you, city manager report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Just a quick announcement to the public, um, that we will be having our discussion on the Focus Plaza that council requested, um, at the last meeting. We're gonna move that to the Mission Playhouse, just in an abundance of caution in case we get more folks and we'll comfortably fit in this room. And we will have a translator that the city will pay for that will be able to do, um, at the mayor's suggestion. Cantonese would be what would be most used by, uh, the businesses that are out there. And so we will have that official translation available for the public and, uh, we will be prepared for that meeting. It'll be televised, like all of our other meetings, it'll be a six-thirty meeting, like all of our other meetings, but the venue will be the Mission Playhouse.
Okay, thank you, Mark. And the council comments and the conference meeting, uh, meeting report. Councilmember Wu?
Finally. Oh, my God. Well, first of all, I would like to say thanks to, uh, OR staff, that last week, we have a great, uh, beer and dumpling, uh, dumpling and beers festival, that is a, a very successful and, uh, we have, uh, dragged a lot of attention from, uh, you know, the general public and, uh, also many young people, they show up and it makes the whole Mission District really energetic and fun. So I just wanted to say thanks to all the staffs that are from our city and thank you so much, mayor and...
And thank you so much, mayor and vice mayor, that organized such a great event. And thank you, city manager, for coordinating everything. And all of, all the council members attended and we just feel the warm, you know, the event is a great turnout. And we look forward to the nice dumpling and beers festival. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Rivera?
Thank you, Aldo and your team for putting this together. I know it was a lot of hard work and it turned out to be really, really good. So, there was a lot of media coverage too that's still talking about it. So, I know that we, we've kind of placed a mark on the map with that festival. Also, don't forget that we have our Fall Festival coming up on October 28th and our Dia de los Muertos celebration too, which is super important to the Hispanic community. And now, it's catching worldwide because of the movie Coco. But we hope that everybody can attend that.
Thank you. Councilmember Minchaca?
Great, thank you. Yeah, I was going to mention dumplings and beer. It, you know, as always, we have record numbers. I just would like to just hopefully share some debriefing notes. You know, we actually sold out by that Wednesday. So, some people were a little upset that day. So, I'm not sure. I know we keep expanding, but, you know, if we're selling out by Wednesday, you know, maybe we need to kind of rethink, we need to rethink and be, plan for something bigger. We had very long lines. And again, I know some people were saying, well, those are good problems to have, but not if you're standing in line. And there were some people that were in line for two hours for a couple dumplings. So, so again, rethinking that, maybe they can have the food pre-prepared. Although I know dumplings probably don't taste as great when they're pre-prepared. And of course, how can we all forget the sticky tofu? I know there was a little snafu there. But, you know, we, I know, we all learned a little something that day about that particular dish, you know, be moved somewhere else. But it was very popular. We actually stood in line and it was gone. That was sold out. And then also, children, you know, there was quite a lot of children. And, you know, I don't really think of beer and children, but, you know, it's a family thing. So, maybe we do need to find a place for families. Because I did witness some families very frustrated because they could not get their kids into the beer garden, which is illegal. But they were very, very upset. And I just, you know, I want to thank the security, the service, the security services that were there because they took some abuse from these parents. I witnessed two of them. And so, perhaps it would be best to make sure we tell parents, you know, the beer gardens are reserved for adults, not for children. And maybe have some area reserved for children, you know, kind of away from the beer garden, away from the hub. I saw some of the kids that were dancing next to the DJ, right in front of the Mission Playhouse. So, they kind of created their own space. But somehow, this has kind of evolved into bringing your kids, which is great. But, you know, the dumpling part is okay, but not the beer part. And so, I just wanted to kind of share some of my observations that evening. But again, it was record number. I know Blossom Market really appreciated it. I went to Blossom Market and they were overwhelmed is an understatement. So, we have everyone's attention. It's just a matter of maybe shifting some things and organizing so people aren't in long lines for so long. And, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Harrington?
Thank you, mayor. I'd agree with everything said so far. I just want to also thank Aldo and staff. And it was a great event. Of course, it's your first, your first time doing it. So, there's a lot of lessons learned. I think we'll carry those to next year. But I'd just say it was a, for the most part, a successful event. I think we'll be more successful next year. Lessons learned, but it was great. So, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, me too. It's, I attended this, the dumpling, the beer. Actually, even before the pandemic, I have a chance to attend it too. It's really like this cultural exchange. Thanks to Aldo and the city staff, like, please fire, probably work to team together to get this event happen. And I just want to share, it's a little small story and regarding the sticky tofu. Okay, I've made, it's have chance, have the one family, the two brothers tell me, one brother tells me, this sticky tofu is not good. You need to let them go, otherwise it smell, it's, another brother says, I'm liking, I'm liking this smell. Okay, so I say, I just try, use this opportunity to exchange the, like, culture, say, this is culture. Even sticky tofu in China, some people like it, some people don't like it too. But it's traditional, the tofu in China too. But looks like that night, it's really like a real sticky tofu. So, that's why, so smelled, you know, you know? Yeah. I know that people like it. If they like it, the sticky tofu, they like this kind of strong, the smell, okay? But I know I go to the, in the, in the Southern California, most of the sticky tofu is not really sticky. But I also experienced with the blue cheese. That time, they showed me the blue cheese, also have the strong smell too. So, yeah, it's, why I say that? Because the dumpling beer also put like east, west, the culture together. But use this example also have to, like, cultural exchange, can understand each other. Then we can have the, like, good harmony, the society and the community, right? So, so that's the very, it's a, it's a very, like a short story. But I feel it's a lot of meaning for the, for the, for the, for the this kind of festival. Hopefully, next year, they're more understanding. But actually, I go to the sticky tofu, they say, you, they want to, and when I go there, they already sold out. That smell is a bit better. So, everything coincident, but it's well done, you know? But even, I think I, I checked, I, I think we, we put on like a time at 6:00 to 10:00. On 10 o'clock, when I, before I leaving, I saw still people, a lot of people inside the grain wine, the wine tasting, the beer tasting, beer tasting, not wine, okay? And plus, I still saw the long line for the dumpling. That's meaning, a lot of people like it, so expecting. So, I hope, yeah, next year, we can bring more future to, yeah. But I don't know, we still can sell more, the beer tasting. I don't know. So, maybe we can plan that to sell more. Okay, all right.
Was there a bar selling drinks?
Okay.
No bar this time? No?
Yeah. Okay, so that's my report. And the closing section is then, the meeting adjourned at 7:37 PM. The next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 1st, 2022, at 6:30 PM and in the Mission Playhouse. Yeah, okay. Thank you.